This time we have our role.
Commissioner Best of Bill Shepherd.
Present.
Commissioner Isaac Owens.
Present.
Commissioner Jay Wesley Rainey.
Here.
Commissioner Russ Reed Senior.
Here.
Chairman Joshua Derrisaw.
Alvin present, thank you very much ma'am, alright. Do we have a, uh, motion to approve today's agenda?
So.
It's been properly moved and seconded, we approve today's agenda, all in favor, let it be known by my voiceful aye. Alright, agenda is approved for today's meeting. Do we have a motion of approval of regular meeting minutes from December seventeenth twenty twenty four meeting? It's been properly moved and seconded, we approve the regular meeting, meeting minutes from December seventeenth twenty twenty four meeting, all in favor, let it be known by my voiceful aye. Um, I don't believe we have any speaker appearance or any specific agenda items, with that we'll roll right into our, uh, department here report, I don't see Mr. Hill here.
He's, he's, I, I could give you all a, a briefing on his report. Uh, Mr. Hill is out today, he is attending the, uh, Community Plant Institute Conference in Dublin. Um, but he highlighted, uh, some items on his report. Uh, he's been meeting with the housing developers to discuss how inter- the efficiency steel construction homes. Uh, there's a meeting scheduled on Saturday, January sixteenth, uh, to discuss bringing, uh, family industry training here, um, in the city of Cordial to the Albany State University campus. And then a tag to your report is, um, proposed development from the developments for the Orange subdivision. Uh, you can see where they have added additional single family homes and townhomes, um, only for the subdivision, uh, but they are still working on the PUD, uh, request for the property. So those are highlights on his report.
Alright. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions concerning about the community announcement in this report?
Yeah. The plug that we're working on. I gave it some thought. And I'm looking at development everywhere. And we, this city needs to be growing. I rode past Gillespie then, I recognize I quickly, those places, I feel that, uh, very quickly, so that's proof that, you know, people work for someone to stay here in Cordial, Georgia. And I feel that we need to, whatever decisions we need to make, whatever they're asking for, as soon as we can get some lumber, some, some more, there's some nails out there, that's what we need to be doing. That's, that's my take on that. So if it's all food or, or wha- whatever it is, uh, you know, I don't, if the plug on holding us back on getting out there, developing up, doing this development. You know, I'm just, I'm, I'm ready to see something go up. I, I, I would like to see something go, go up. I understand the residents, they're dope, you know, I understand their requests, but the city needs to be growing. City, the city needs to be growing.
I don't think the plug will hold us back, I think what it will do is, uh, give you all some assurance and just let you know exactly what will be built in the subdivision. Where everything will be placed, you know, the homes, the townhomes, all the infrastructure, so. We should be moving, you know, forward with that.
I think one of the things, um, that concerned me when the original meeting about the art shirt was, I wasn't here, I was traveling. Um, but people started to text and reach out to me, uh, and saying that the city turned out development, and I, I, I know. You know, people here have something wrong with it. But, I went back in to watch me, and I think it means about three hours and seventeen minutes. And the concern that I think a lot of people were saying that was against it, was more so what they didn't want out there, and it was apartments. And the question was, it was maybe what people didn't want to address was who was going to come out there. And, uh, when you look at that particular area, and hopefully where the price point would be. Um, and where the ideal is, there's a need for teachers, principals, doctors, nurses. Um, I don't think we would have had that concern because one of the biggest thing was, I think was, they didn't necessarily want apartments, and I get it, you don't want rentals because you could have somebody who went, leasing then the next year, or however long the lease it is. However, that population also is a rental population, if they haven't decided whether they want to settle somewhere, meaning the ones I talked about before. Um, but also mixed uses good. When you live next to somebody who's not necessarily where you would or describing to be, that's so much you can learn from one another. Um, and that was my main concern, was, uh, you can't let fear keep you from doing what's best and good for the majority. And I'm in favor of, but I also think, um, because what I've heard is that, um, people from the school, the hospital and businesses also want to come and speak for it. So I do think at some point we need to schedule a, a, a public hearing. The update the public on it, and then a lot of these other people to speak on their need. Uh, so that will be my thing, if we can, kind of have a public hearing to talk about it, where we are now and get other opinions, um, of, you know, about that development, because that will be, like Commissioner Reese was saying, um, that will be a, a really good development, and, and we grow if we offer places to live. And, and we need to grow.
And Mr. Chairman, there will be a public hearing once they, there will actually be two, one at the planning commission meeting.
Right.
And then one when it comes before this commission. So the first one, we will make sure we notify all of the community partners, the community as a whole, to let them know of that public hearing where they can receive this information and can come and provide comment.
Perfect, alright, well, thank you.
Chairman, on this, uh, most of the concern with that was the fact that, trying to find out the amount of investment that was going to be made. And the fact that it was R four with no restrictions, so it felt like it was going to be a flip situation, because they were originally only going to build two houses. In there, because I was the one that asked how much they were going to invest. Now, they've answered a bunch of these questions right here, and it's going to be a two-stage construction process, which is a much larger investment, which is what I'm much more comfortable with, with it. So, they're answering a lot of the public's questions, so they are obviously very interested in going forward with the development, and, so, I'm glad it's making the residents feel better, and I believe this will, this will make everybody feel better.
Thank you, sir. Any other committee or community advancement managers report? Thank you, alright, we'll move on, uh, finance department, Sal Zanna, give morning to you, how you doing? Happy New Year.
Okay. The sales tax collection for the month of December was, um, four hundred forty-four thousand, four hundred sixty-two dollars and eighty-four cents. So we are still collecting taxes, and everything's coming in pretty good. That's all I have.
Any questions for our, uh, department report? Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's fire, give morning to you, sir, how you doing?
This will be for reporting period November twenty-fifth through January second. We had a total of a hundred and twenty-one calls for service. We had four smoke scares, eleven rubbish or grass fires, fifty-three calls for medical assists, eleven motor vehicle accidents, three structure fires, seven gas leaks, all of those weren't necessarily leaks, some of that's just people smell gas and call and we have to go investigate, and then five cooking fires. As far as department news, I'm excited to, uh, announce that our ISO evaluation is complete and we were upgraded to a class-two fire department. Forty percent of that evaluation is water supply and delivery, uh, delivery, so I want to recognize Debbie Wright, the water department, for her leadership. Ten percent of that is the efficiency of our E nine-one-one system, so I want to recognize Sheriff Hancock and Linda Herman for their leadership in what they do. Fifty percent of that was the fire department, and what we were graded on was manpower, our trucks and equipment, response time, emergency mitigation, training, community risk reduction, and public safety education. Um, there are a little over forty thousand fire departments nationwide. The last Google search I did showed that only about seventeen hundred have achieved the class-two rating. So that puts us in the top four or five percent of all fire departments nationwide, so we're proud of that. Um, Commission and, um, our city manager Angela Reading also deserve a lot of credit for that, for your continued support as we've grown. Um, ISO, how does that relate to the community? Insurance companies, large insurance companies, most of them use the ISO rating when they're determining whether or not to write a policy, residential or commercial, um, and what fees to charge. So, the lower ISO rating directly relates to lower insurance premiums for residents and commercial property. And that's all I have.
Any questions come in for our fire, um, department? Congratulations, sir, thank you for all the hard work you're doing, and thank you for thanking us, and, um, but I appreciate your leadership, for, um, moving us forward on that. Uh, Commissioners, thank you all for knowing Mr., um, well, I wish I would get a cameo, one of the things, well, he was concerned about the fire training, and we did what we had to do, to get that done, and that, so, it was a good team effort, I appreciate you all for all that.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
And Miss Debbie always one hundred, what's going on in the water department, and so, thank you. Alright, uh, next is, uh, foundation development, Miss Contral, give morning to you ma'am.
My report this morning. The first item is the, um, Cordial Plan and Zoning Commission. The Cordial Plan and Zoning Commission has not scheduled a meeting for January twenty-fifth, for any zoning amendments, annexation, et cetera, for the coming month as of this day. The Cordial Order Zoning and Appeals has not scheduled a meeting for January twenty-fifth, today, to review or consider any public queries for sign awareness, et cetera. The Cordial Historic Preservation Commission has scheduled a meeting for Jan- for Wednesday, January fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, at six P M, within the Cordial City Hall Municipal Courtroom. The Cordial Historic Preservation Commission will review and consider the request of the following property owners. Property owner Donna Faitrip to demolish an existing shed, and replace it within, with a ten by twelve new wooden shed, to be located within the same location, seven fifteen East Fourteenth Avenue, to be replaced on a concrete foundation. Uh, app, uh, applicant Dean Traxton, Thaxton LLC, and the property owner is Don Hush Douglas Dean, six oh one East Fourteenth Avenue, Cordial, Georgia. And his proposed sketch of work will involve installing aluminum fence, back and side yard, four point five feet in height, and hand, side yard, four point five feet in height. And that's all I have, Dr. Bell, unless you have some questions.
Any questions for Miss Contral? Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Alright, yes, it's H. Good morning to you, Debbie.
Chairman, Mr. Good morning, I have my report in the packet, just a few items I'm going to touch on. Um, beginning of the first of December, all the information required to review the, uh, Girma Firefighter Cancer Benefit Program was submitted. That policy is in effect as of January first twenty twenty-five, that is a semi-annual policy, so we'll be reviewing it on July one. In that same vein, uh, the new required PTSD program for first responders, all the information, the census, the resolutions, um, everything has been sent into Girma, that policy has been bound, and it's also in effect as of January first twenty twenty-five. The annual Georgia Department of Art and Accounts, uh, Annual Immigration Reform Act, uh, Reform and Collection, I'm sorry, Immigration Reform Act Collection Report, all that information was, uh, was gathered and submitted, it had December thirty-first due date, it was submitted on December the twenty-seventh. Uh, it was acknowledged and received by the Georgia Department of Art and Accounts. And then we have extended a conditional offer to a mechanic in the fleet department. That person has met all the conditions and requirements, and started to work yesterday on the sixth. And then lastly, just for, for your information, the entire month of January is open enrollment for our medical insurance. So anyone wishing to make changes, they do so during January without the need of qualifying event. And we'll have representatives from our insurance carrier here in the courtroom tomorrow from one to three to meet with the employees. If they may have questions, uh, regarding changes or, uh, updates to their policies. And that's all the information I have, I share your questions.
Any questions from us away? Regarding our insurance, do we carry vision insurance?
I say, I say, uh, supplemental, voluntary supplemental policy.
Okay, um, the, for the Emery Go-Side Smart Program, um, will we get any reported statistics on how that been, uh, at some point?
That just wrapped up, uh, around the end of December, mid-end of December. They took out the phone interviews with everyone who participated in the, I'm not sorry, they took a random observation.
Right.
They took out the interviews with those people, so that's what we're beginning to report again, and recommendations of what would be improved upon.
Perfect, okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is municipal court, Miss Walker, give morning to you.
Um, a report for December twenty-fourth for the municipal court. We had a total of three hundred forty-four cases, twenty-nine criminal, three hundred fifteen traffic. Or non-bench wars issued, um, forty-five license suspenses. For cash bonds, bonds, deposits from probation, um, and web payments, a total of forty-eight thousand, nine hundred twenty-one dollars and nine thousandths. Um, with, um, DROs finished and processed. And, February third is my last one.
Alright, um, any questions, comments to the, uh, the municipal court?
I just, I just had to say you go, actually years of service, and it must come to pretty too, man.
I don't know what we're going to do with that, you been, you been in the motor that you kept this, that courtroom,
running for some years way before I got here. You been in engine that, that, that kept running it. As you got a job on your head, find somebody to come close to replacing, Miss Walker, I, I'm sitting back and watching this.
Okay. Twenty-five issue.
We will be recognizing this Walker.
Well, um, the other comments? Well, I appreciate your impartiality, anytime I call to have a problem, you call it straight down the line, you told me what it was and what it is. And I appreciate that, and that's what I look for, not anybody swinging where it is, but just be honest and fair. Uh, you know the way I operate, and I, me and you, you know, we had an issue where we own different sides, and you know, that's the way it works when you're being honest with folks, and I always agree, but figure out what's going on. And, and I appreciate your honesty and transparency, uh, in all those situations. And I know for me, uh, that's what I appreciate, you know, moving forward. So I appreciate you and everything you've done for the court in this city over the last twenty-five years.
Thank you.
And, uh, don't be a stranger, uh.
I'll be in Brazil.
And so, I love Brazil. I just went, uh, a couple of months ago, loved it, so enjoy your time.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks, Miss Walker. Next is, uh, uh, police, police department, also be giving codes and animals. Give morning to you, sir.
Alright, my report's in the packet, I'll just go over the highlights. Reporting period was November twenty-second through December thirtieth. Part one crimes, we had a total of eighty-six. Motor vehicle thefts, we had a total of eight, seven of those were recovered and one arrest, uh, in connection to those. Aggravated assaults, we had six, one arrest on that. Uh, larcenies thefts, we had a total of sixty-four, forty of those were entering autos, five juveniles were arrested. I did a, uh, I was interviewed by W A L D yesterday along with the sheriff, which is trying to bring awareness to this, once again, just lock your car doors, take your valuables out, it's not uncommon to see numbers, uh, entering auto numbers go up in December, it's not an uncommon thing. However, around here, that's an unusually high number, so, again, just please lock your cars, take your valuables out. On that, we also had five shop liftings with one adult arrest and five juveniles arrested, nineteen other thefts. Part two crimes, a hundred and ninety-one, incidents reported, two hundred and twelve, thirteen community contacts, two hundred and forty-seven citations with a hundred and six warnings, and one thousand six hundred and thirty-six, uh, calls for service from dispatch. As far as departmental news, we actually have three, uh, that number was updated as of, um, yesterday. Uh, applicants in the hiring process, December eighteenth, uh, we participated in Shop with the Cop, we were able to bring, uh, eighteen, uh, third graders to Walmart and shop, that was a great time as it always is. We also attended Christmas parties for, uh, Chris County Primary, Elementary, and Middle School. Um, everything was a big success, we love that time of year, we love giving back to the community, it always goes over very well, and, uh, we look to expand it in the future. Um, that's all I have for the police department.
Any questions for police report?
Mr. Chairman, I have one question. Uh, Chief Hurd, I know, um, you and the sheriff participated in a joint interview yesterday. Uh, on the vehicles, again, it's a large number, but, uh, the seven that were, was recovered, was it those recovered by PD, by the sheriff's department, or was it a combination of both?
It's a combination, I, I just looked at, you know, the number recovered, if it was reported here, I'm reporting that it was recovered. Uh, if you want, I can break down the numbers for them.
It could be either or, okay, um, thank you.
With the arrests yesterday, if, if you want to talk about joint, uh, efforts, that was a joint effort through and through as far as making those two arrests on, on these suspects, uh, from yesterday. Uh, our, our units were dispatched to the area, uh, Chris County units assisted, they located the subject, the subject ran, we were able to kind of block off different areas and joint effort, we got them in custody. So a lot of these efforts kind of go hand in hand, both of us working together.
Good, and that's what communities need to know that we are working together.
Oh, no doubt.
Thank you.
Chief, Chairman for the month, I want to give a special thanks. When you talk about the shop with the cop, the being out there at the, uh, at Walmart buying the kids, I see that group of kids all the time, uh, special group of kids, and, uh, and, and from my understanding, and I could be wrong, but, I hit it till I went back and found, got some, had to go back and get some extras, you know, to go in, and, and do more, um, that's awesome, and, and I just want to thank you for that, I want to thank you for being the type of man that you are. You gotta, you gotta know those kids, and, and when I said that group of kids, you know what I'm talking about. You, you, you gotta know those kids, and, uh, I actually want to say thank you, I don't want to go too far too, and I don't want to fear nobody, or make somebody feel some, some type of way, but, I just want to say thank you for that, 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 that touched me, that, that was my Christmas gift.
Alright, we, we enjoy doing it, actually, the city manager happened to be in the area, and I think a huge smile came on her face too. Uh, another thing that we added this year, just to kind of go on to that, is we included codes and animal control in it, and they absolutely loved it, and, uh, it worked out very well, so it's more than just shop with the cop, it's kind of shop with the police department, I guess, uh, it worked well. If there's no other questions or comments on that, I'll move on to codes. Uh, same reporting period, I'll just hit the highlights, abandoned vehicles, total of four, inspections, we had six. Junk, uh, items prohibited, twenty-nine, and then other, we had twenty. As far as departmental news, again, they just assisted with shop with the cop, and they're working hard. Our, uh, new software is working really well, um, they have tablets that are portable, and they can go anywhere and continue to do their work, and, uh, log in everything. Um, that, that system is working great, uh, it was a huge asset to, to, uh, get that system, so thank you all, uh, for allowing us to be able to, to get that system. That's all I have for codes, I mean, you obviously have the other numbers in the back, Speedway is, is, should be opening pretty soon. And you see the rest of the numbers there, um, not much has really changed on those. Race track is still, they're still waiting their plans and permits. That's all I have for that.
Any questions for codes? Thank you, sir.
Alright, animal control, finally, same reporting period, dogs and cat intakes, a total of a hundred twenty-one for that reporting period that was up. City intake, total of sixty-two, intakes from Chris County, sixty-one, intakes from other entities were fifteen, number of calls received, fifty-two. Uh, number of adoptions, seven owner reclaims, twenty-one adoptions and twenty-one rescues. At the time of reporting, you see, we had, uh, seventeen dogs, twenty-seven cats in the kennel, total citations were twenty-one, and warnings issued were fifteen. Um, a lot of donations, we just wanted to say a special thank you to everybody who donates to the animal shelter, food and other items. Goes a long way, we, our donations have increased, and we just thank everybody for the generosity, and for the great things that they do and support that they give to the shelter. Additionally, uh, animal adoptions and reclaims has risen, and that is an, an awesome thing. Um, so that animals are not just being stagnated in the shelter, once we get them, they're able to be adopted out, so that's a great thing, and that's, I think, a lot, in large part through the efforts of, uh, our social media, uh, we get a lot of views on our social media from animal control, so, I think in large part it goes to that. Uh, and then the final thing is microchipping is a big thing, a big hit, uh, it's working well, as I reported several months ago, we got, uh, grant for the microchipping, it's gone over very well, so we're going to continue with that, uh, we still have the means to, to provide that service. Microchipping is very important, locating animals and making sure all the records and everything is up to date. That's all I have.
Any questions for animal control? Thank you, sir. Okay, alright, next is public works. Public works. Listen, my sir. We're on, yes, I know who's going to come. Come on, sir, alright.
Morning, how you doing, Mike?
Good, yeah.
Uh, we got, uh, the Christmas decoration, it's almost done, we can set it tomorrow. Uh, and, uh, R and D, with the hose parts, uh, they were trying to cause rain that stop them, kind of hold it up a little bit. And also, uh, I got, uh, Jimmy Jackson and Coley Wood, who, uh, Jimmy got, Jimmy got the, uh, Oxford, and then, uh, Coley got the, uh, Emmy, so they can, uh, explain this to you, what I go, for them.
Okay, on the Aqua Project, they're in the first phase. Uh, what they're doing is, is slip mining some of the critical areas that we have a still problem in. And, uh, they're also having me to try to save some of the city money on, when they, first phase that they do, they're going to go in and clean the line, and then they're going to camera. And once they get that done, they will see how many taps is on that line. For instance, like, uh, they got one where they have ten taps on the line, but they're alone with five houses out there. So they're asking me which one is live, and I'm doing the best I can to let them know which one is which. And they'll probably participate on that first phase right there. They also got another project called pipe person. Pipe person is, 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 if this line is kind of too small for that area, that they could literally, uh, without doing any digging. Pipe person is, is, is if this line is kind of too small for that area, that they could literally, uh, without doing any digging, use some pipe and put it in and just install a whole new pipe. Any more questions I got to explain it to this again?
Any questions? I appreciate that, that was very detailed.
Good morning, Mr. Mike. Uh, he just really asked me to come this morning to answer the questions concerning Emmy.
Yes, and that's actually on the agenda, so I want to hold off until that point in time, this day, of course. But, uh, it's number twelve on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That concludes, any questions for public works? I know you're used to it. All right, uh, yes, sir, all right, thank you, sir. All right, social media and marketing, Mr. Small, good morning to you, sir.
Good morning, uh, chairman, commissioner. City manager reading, happy new year to you.
Happy new year.
Um, in, uh, in your report, um, going back to December seventeenth was the last, uh, update that we, that we had on the website. Received another update yesterday and, uh, just very quickly, Keyan let us know that quality assurance is wrapping up and builders have not identified any issues or problems with the website, so that continues to move forward. Content migration will begin at the end of this week. Uh, we'll get another update on January twentieth, and so I'll update you at our twenty first meeting. And we are on track for a February reveal, so things are moving along there very well. So, uh, that's the only update I have to my report. And, uh, glad to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for, uh, Mr. Small? Saying no, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
What's up, Mr. Debbie, U C N T, good morning to you.
I was just going to update y'all on the grant totals for twenty twenty four. Uh, we pumped a total of six hundred and fifty five million gallons of water. We treated at the wastewater plant, one billion, two hundred and twenty four million. That's almost twice as much as we pumped. So, hopefully with the ARPA money, these numbers will start to come down at the wastewater plant. I mean, that's the goal, is to get those down substantially. Uh, we, uh, opened the R F Ps for the lead service line replacement project yesterday. We had two bidders and we're going to be looking over those and deciding which engineering funds to take over the next week or two. And that's pretty much it, unless y'all have any questions?
Any questions from, uh, this Debbie?
Debbie, I, um, I was out at the treatment plant, um, a couple days ago, um, checking it out, I had a couple people, I had a couple questions. And I'll be seeing you about setting up a tour.
Okay, let's let it warm up a little bit, please. It's bitter out there today. And speaking of weather, y'all better take care of your pipes, your plants and your pets this week, because it's going to be way below freezing. Okay, thank you.
Debbie said too cold, we walked.
I said, I said it was true.
Thank you, ma'am, all right. That concludes our department head reports, we shall move into the agenda items. Um, agenda item number one, do we have a motion? Um, to elect the vice chair?
My motion is, getting a lot of taking it, it's going to be hard, but I, uh, my motion is Wesley Rainey.
Do, uh, well.
To serve as vice chairman, that's my nomination. My nomination is for Wesley Rainey to serve throughout the year twenty twenty five as vice chair.
All right, we have a motion to say to elect as vice chairman, Wesley Rainey, all right, in the discussion? Well, in the discussion, before I start. Um, I think that, um, I appreciate we doing something different as far as vice chair. Um, to be very bluntly transparent, I do think that, um, Ms. Shepherd also, um, given her tenure at her service, uh, would be a good candidate for vice chair. Normally when we make a motion, we make the motion, or should make the motion to, uh, discuss and then we nominate. Um, um, but, um, I would definitely, um, appreciate the consideration of, uh, Ms. Shepherd to be our vice chair as well. Um,
Sure, if I may speak in this.
Uh, give me one moment, let me finish, I know you may not want it. But I'm a big fan of people not wanting something, maybe the best people for it. Um, because that's a certain, um, usually that's a certain, um, audacity for people who want something. And, um, I, um, I think you have served the community well, and I think that, um, you know, um, to be able to, um, serve in that capacity, and I know you also serve on the G M A, you've been in different and several trainings in that capacity, in your, um, your hours as far as training, it's there, you believe in training. Um, and so those are the specific reasons, because you serve in a, a capacity, uh, to that, to that, uh, level, um. Yeah, so, yes, ma'am.
Uh, I, I really don't think I can take on the responsibility of any other. Vice presidents or assistants of the industry right now, I'm sort of stressed out to see over the state of Georgia and other organizations that I'm affiliated with. Because my ethic issue is still on the improve, so maybe next year I'll be a better candidate for you all.
Chairman, if I may? Oh, I've spoken with Commissioner Shepherd in detail about this, as well as I've spoken with Commissioner Rainey. They both reached out to me and wanted me to continue as vice chairman. And I want to thank you guys tremendously with everything that I'm dealing with, for your vote of confidence. I want to thank you and Wesley Rainey tremendously for that, but I do not want to put this commission in the same place it was in so three, four years ago, and I was suspended and there was no vice chair. And that's the reason I am, that's why I'm where I am right now with it. Um, and again, thank you, Commissioner, uh, Shepherd for that. Uh, there are some people in your lack, in this election that brought you on here. Uh, I'm amazed by the vote of confidence that you have now, when, when, when certain people seek you out of your seat, uh, to even be here. Uh, so, again, thank you for talking with me, thank you, Jay Wesley Rainey, and Chair, now, you talked about the discussion, uh, just reading on the agenda, I, it says to elect the vice chair. Had it a saying, discussion, I would have been more than willing to enter to the discussion that was discussed, now, there was a motion and there was a second.
And, 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 sir, the, and I called that motion in that second as my duty as chair to do that. But when, um, when you know, uh, first of all, I can take issue with the word elect, because that's not what our charter speaks to. But I'm giving deference to that this morning, because, um, you know, uh, I can take issue with that wording. But I'm trying to do my job up here despite the wording of it. Um, so, um, and if we're being blunt, as I've always said up here, that I don't hate anybody past the best thing to do. I also, yes, while I was against Commissioner Shepherd for reelection, it wasn't personal. It is, as I always said, a belief if someone had a seating, having read a thirty five page charter, I have issue with somebody who I don't believe. However, I believe in democracy and when the people speak, that's what you have to contend and deal with. I wasn't even giving that grace and favor, because a lot of these people, uh, despite what the majority of people say in the cordial, uh, sought every way and still seeking every way to remove me instead of going to the election. So, uh, I accepted where it is with Commissioner Shepherd, I also, um, nominated for, for other stuff, because I believe in diversity, not just in race, but also in gender. And so, those are my reasons, because we don't have men chairman, we don't have men vice chairman or what have you. And so, my thing is, we're going to move forward and I, and I fundamentally believe, because I grew up professionally through education and women run education. I know if you give women a task, they can do it exceptionally well. Um, and so, um, those are my concerns, um, with what we're doing and I appreciate your time as vice chair. And as I said a couple of minutes ago, the vice chair have no real authority unless the chair is not in the hill. You all have spent the last three years striking my power away. So, at the end of the day, neither one of them have really strongly, strong authorities, um, or what have you. Um, so, if we're going to talk about a lot of this stuff and specifically where it is, like I said, I'm doing my best to do my job, but I will voice my opinion up here. And you have a right to voice yours as well, so, um, that is where it is, and like I said, it's just a discussion, um, or what have you, um, at the end of the day, but any further discussion? I'll say less, any further discussion? Uh, Commissioner, um, um, what, Commissioner, what's about here? All right, we shall proceed to vote. Uh, Commissioner Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner, uh, Shepherd, sorry. Uh, uh, I don't know if you're going to vote for yourself, but, uh, Commissioner Rainey?
Yes.
So, you're voting for yourself to be vice chair, okay. All right, it is, uh, uh, motion carries. It is approved, Commissioner Wesley Rainey will serve as the vice shepherd of year twenty twenty five, all right? Um, I deny number two appointments that retainers for municipal court judge.
So?
Um, is it properly moved in second that we appoint, say, retainers from municipal court judge? Any discussion?
Sheriff, along with the, uh, point that we said to also set the retainer, is that also correct?
Um, it's always Commissioner, uh, the, the, this bodies, um, will, um, to, um, do both or separate. It's all within the motion and, uh, you know, or, um, you know, however y'all see fit to do it and to get the votes forward. Is it any concern about having those two things together? Okay. All right. Uh, so, one of the things that I think we need to clear up, um, going into this matter is, um, when we say set retainer, that's not the way it's currently going through our, um, payroll. Am I incorrect, city manager?
Uh, the judge pays some payroll.
Right, so, that's a, it's technically.
Not a retainer, that's right.
No, that's what I'm saying, it's not a retainer. So, again, this is something I have issue with, um, with the wording. And, and, and I'm not saying on y'all behalf, Ms. Myfree, I'm saying what we've been doing for years, that has not been the right way of doing it and yeah, digress. Um, we need to clear that up. I don't know how we go about clearing it up, but we need to clear that up, because it, it can be both. And when we make a motion here for something, that's what we should be doing. Uh, so, any discussion of how we're going to address and what are we going to do moving forward? My thing is always to be in line with what our charter says. Um, and, um, in standard practice, uh, our legal practice first and foremost. Um, so how do we move forward with what we're, we're, we're going to do here?
I'll just use the term compensation. I suspect none of these, the first five, two to five that retainers, is a amount, I think, uh, public defender and the prosecutor have an amount to pay them per month. Me, it's paid me by the hour, it's not a retain. Retainer is something that like you pay, uh, somebody a thousand dollars a month and they work against that and then, uh, about the hour, but that's not what we did here. It's a misnomer, but it's, it's, uh, uh, certainly not a, uh, stumbling block, just think of it as, uh, the word compensation.
Thank you for that, sir. Uh, now, my only concern is, are we in line with it still being through payroll?
Uh, yes, sir, you, you can, you can compensate the judges in payroll. I think we've been doing it for a number of years and there's no provision about doing that, some cities do. Uh, there was a city, uh, county one compensated me, uh, that one, so, uh, you can do that. Nothing illegal about that, uh, irregular, uh, that, that's fine.
Any other discussion? City manager, do you, uh, have any discussion?
Uh, no, um, in my experience, it's always been paid through a contract, but as the city attorney states, it sees through in different ways and uh, with his legal experience, if it's been paid, you know, through payroll, then I have no issue with it.
My understanding has been this way for years, long before the judge, right, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
They took a position under that machine.
So, will we cut him a salary employer as long as he has a city?
Yeah, that's pretty much right, it, uh, he has a salary, I suppose, not a ridiculous.
None of us did. Well, except you. Up here. You understand, then we're going to keep it one hundred. Uh, uh, I, I do have issues with the word in, employee, though, because, uh, I think there are some issues with that term, because I, when I went to the court, um, I think that's a misunderstanding of who the judge actually, uh, communicates with and who he can communicate with. And so, the city manager is not necessarily over the city judge. And that's what I was told when I went to the court, that I need to speak to the city manager, that's not the way our charter speaks to it. And so, I want to be clear about using the word employee, because if he's an employee, that means he will be under the city manager, and that's not the case. If this body of this, uh, any one of the officials have concerns, um, not concerns about changing a ruling or doing favors, but about concern of operation, we are empowered by our charter to be able to go directly to our city judge. Uh, and that needs to be clear. Um, I tried to clear that up with this body, uh, before, um, but, um, that needs to be absolutely clear, that if we have issues and concerns, uh, we don't have to share that through our city managers to get to our city judges, it does not work like that. Uh, this appointment speaks to that, anybody that we appoint speaks to that, um, uh, first and foremost. Um, so, um, Um uh first and foremost, um so, um. That needs to be uh said now, it's up to the commission, whether we're gonna keep it through payroll or contract. Uh but we need to make that decision, we need to, are we gonna keep it the same, are we gonna uh do it contractionally, how do you all wanna move forward with that?
Chairman, I'm just suggesting that we set this compensation through payroll at the one thousand one forty-two twenty-seven per per month. Is what I think based and just have it worded, that it has compensation. And keep it through payroll.
You know the discussion? And as I said, we shall proceed to vote. Commissioner Ray?
Uh yes.
Alright, Commissioner Reeves? Commissioner Shepard?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Alright, motion carry. The judge is uh appointed for the twenty twenty-five. Year at a compensation one thousand one hundred and forty-two uh through payroll. I guess we'll go ahead and do our oath of office. The next court date, so we wanna go ahead and get this done. Well, you need to go ahead and get this done. Alright, you can raise your hand and say, alright. I rest the rock. Uh you can decide. My my speaking is not that great early anymore. So I rest the rock, you solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully perform to do this under this court judge. Of the city of Cordial, I will support and defend the charter there of as well as the constitutional laws of the state of Georgia. And the United States of America.
I do.
Alright, alright, congratulations. Alright, agenda item number three. Is it properly moved in second, second that we have uh uh the. The city solicitor, alright, any discussion?
Um with the city solicitor, and I guess it involves. At this point, are we able to um look? To explore for other city solicitor or public defenders? Would that be uh, would this be that time to bring that, put that on the table?
You asked, well, I do follow up on the commission, so if if my thought on this is. There was some con- conversation about this and. Uh we talked about what we've done for so long, uh for twelve years. Came here with the intention, the first meeting of January to elect the vice chairman. Set a retain. At the point, a judge, until lately, until probably two years ago, two, three years ago. We added a solicitor and public defender and. These uh and and they went on with the uh apartment of the city attorney, all these things, as the chairman spoke of many ago. About these one through, one through five, um. I do feel that. Because it's public, the public's money, I do feel that if we're gonna do this. I think it should be done in October, November, I wanna like give the time to see if anybody else is interested in the position. That way we will fail to people that wanna serve, that that wanna serve. But I I I honestly believe when we get to this point, to to the first of the year. That we miss our interview time. That's that that's what I feel and. And 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 I just would like to see this moving forward, I just to see this moving forward. And we plan on making any changes and we we know that their contract only lasts for a year. And I just would like to see it moving forward. Like I said, if anybody else is interested in doing this, uh we just open it up to. The public sometime October, November, and that gives us time to. Interview the people who possibly wanna come in and do it, it gives us time. Uh we can look at those individuals and we can go and look at, look at the solicitor, look at the public defender. And and we can make a decision based off, but to come here today and say. Hey, that's a point for two, two months, three months, interview other people. And 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 then make the decision, I I think it's not only unfair to them, but it's unfair to the courts. Uh if if and I say this, if they're willing to find us with this group, with 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 this group here, um. Being in charge of the of the courts, real part of the courts, if they're been in the findings, y'all know something that I don't know, please share it with me. So I can be totally fair. Just if if they've been in the findings, sharing me at this, at 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 this point and uh and 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 I can move forward.
I think there has been some discussions and some concerns about some people that have had some some dealings with them. That has come up and that's my reason for saying that. And I do agree with what you're saying, this might seem to be at the wrong time to maybe do it at this point. But I think also we have to look at the overall concern of the people that are gonna be dealing with them, that would be the public. And if the public has voiced their concern about their uncertainty of the group. Then we owe it to them even at might at this late time to perhaps look at doing a ninety day. Uh you know, until we can, and give us time to do that, because they have been some concerns and there have been several people that have come. We have one person in particular, just a few months ago that came and and um it was shared with the chairman and some other people. Uh about what took place during that interaction. And because of that, if if there's one, I think that we owe it to ourselves. To 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 investigate to that degree. And that that would be my reason for saying that. I don't wanna say the person's name at this point because of the setting that we're in. But uh because of that, I think we owe it to ourselves and granted, it would have been a good time to do it in October. It would have been. But we're in a position now where we don't want to put ourselves where we run to the same thing again. And within this year, so if this a way to go ahead and rectify it now. That's why I ask, is this the place to put it on the table now?
The commissioner, uh third one. When you, and 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 I listen, the chairman has taught me this, uh always time here is to listen and the words. How you said chairman use the words in detail, I listen, uh if this thing was brought to you guys. Months ago, if somebody came to you months ago, came to the chairman months ago, this individual. And this board points those those individuals, why are we hearing about it now?
So sir, let me be absolutely clear, we haven't just heard about.
I have not heard anything about an individual, if she spoke with, if she or he spoke with y'all. I think that should have been a meeting.
Well.
That that should have been a meeting.
Well.
And we should have.
That's been three several occasions where I have brought to this body in executive session and in this meeting. And when Judge Wright appeared before this court, uh this. Talking about the entire court. And when I said to you and I said to Judge Wright in a meeting, it should have been a minute meetings. Or what have you, I don't know if you was here, cuz I understand you've been busy or what have you. Uh however. About two years ago, I said in executive session issues I had with this court. I said right here in the public meeting that I had with this court and my, I never make it personal. I never, the situation came more familiar that I started dealing with the court, but I don't make it personal. And at the end of the day, my thing is to do the will of the people. And if there's one person treated unfairly or misguided. Then I'm looking at who else been treated unfairly. I always brought it to this board in executive session or in public meeting when I have the opportunity. So I I I honestly don't know where you been, but over the last two years, I have addressed grievances of the people. And of myself of this quarter. Uh we have a situation. Where I asked Ms. Walker point blank question during this meeting and she gave her opinion of it. During this meeting in front of the public, in front of the cameras, in front of people. And so we ain't starting now and it's always at the discretion of this commission. To if we wanna do ninety days, if we wanna say no or what have you, at the end of the day to do that. I don't think we should say because we didn't start something in October or whatever. Then we got to deal with something a whole another year. Because in that whole other year, what can happen when we are aware other things are happening? So this is not the first time. I take real hard offense with that. Maybe this is the first time you listening clearly. But this is not the first time we brought up issues and I and I'll be absolutely transparent and blunt at this moment. Part of my issue is is the impartiality of the court. When I, as the chairman of this city, came to our judge with an issue. Because the judge was allowed to find the city solicitor and the public defender, he can be impartial to what I was saying. As I always said, Ron Reagan has a quote. Verify the truth. Verify the truth and 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 you got to listen, not with loyalty. Not, you got to listen to understand when someone coming to me, someone coming to me about anybody, I'm not gonna listen. And and dismiss what they're saying because of their closeness to me or whatever relation of me. I'm gonna listen to the situation and make an informed opinion based on what it is. That's not, and I get it, I I come from a different profession of counseling. Where that's what we have to do, uh and 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 my mind maybe is conditioned and trained that way at this point. But what I do expect for letting them appoint the officials. When we get things coming to us, that we listen to the situation and not listen for loyalty. And make a decision based on loyalty, because every one of us can be wrong. And in situations when one of us is wrong, we gotta be honest and truthful enough with one another and say, I may agree with you. Eight out of ten times, but this time that person was wrong. And we need to stand up and do the right thing when that person is wrong. And this commission has not done that. So it's personally offensive to me. The city has said these issue has not been brought up when they have. I have a strong memory, a lot of people don't like me for it. But at the end of the day, that's just not the case, that's just not the case.
If I may, I was responding to the comment that Commissioner Owens made about an individual. Some some months ago, that's what I was responding to. And if that, if this court answers to this board. Just as well we go into executive session about any other, uh about any department here, about anybody else. O- okay, so we can do that because I would have liked to hear months ago.
Well, I don't think he was here, sir. I think everything was going on. I don't think he was here when when that was happening. I think that answered that question. So do we have a motion to enter executive session? For the matters of uh personnel, I think will be, uh any other reason we need to go in executive session? Alright. Alright, we have a motion in second to enter to executive session for personnel reason. I'll favor that to be known by voice or I. Motion carries.
Motion to come out of executive session.
It's been properly moved in second that we come out of executive session at eleven twenty-one AM. Motion carries. Alright, uh we were properly on agenda item number three. For our agenda items, alright commissioners, your hands.
That was a motion made already before we left. That was a motion in second for the appointment of the retainer for the city solicitor.
Let's do it again, see if there's a city superseding motion, if somebody's certain that.
So the motion during the executive session came after that motion, so we need to do this motion. Second. We're probably moved a second that we appoint um city solicitor. Any discussion?
Listen, Ken, I just wanna make sure we change and make the set compensation instead of retainer. Will they remain the same or will it be separate? Appoint it then, set compensation.
The word is just, in my mind, I I like to be as specific and exact as possible, so I just have an issue with the word, but I. When they make the motion or we approve it or what have you, it'll be. Alright, no discussion, we shall proceed to vote. Commissioner Rainey?
Yes.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepard?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Alright, as a uh alright, it's a per uh the city solicitor, Mr. Blank is um. Is appointed to be the city solicitor, alright, and compensation uh is the same. Alright, agenda item number four, appoint and co- uh set compensation for the public defender. We have uh, it's been properly. Moved in second that we uh appoint and set compensation for our public defender, any discussion? Yeah, he's he's not here. He may have another meeting, I'm assuming, or. Yeah, yeah, so, there you go. Yep, so um, for her discussion, um I, as I've said before, this ain't coming to surprise anybody. The current uh public defender does not have my confidence uh for a record, so I'll say that uh moving forward. Any other discussion? Alright, we shall proceed to vote. Commissioner Rainey?
Yes.
Commissioner uh Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yeah.
Commissioner Shepard?
Yeah.
Alright, uh he is appointed uh and compensation set the same for Mr. Land. Alright? Uh agenda item number five, appoint uh the city attorney. Uh it's been properly moved in second that we appoint the city attorney, alright, any discussion? Alright, seeing now, we shall proceed to vote. Commissioner Shepard?
Yeah.
Commissioner uh Rainey?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yes.
Alright, it is, you announce, please.
Thank you all.
Alright, thank you. Alright, agenda item number six, consider and approve event permit for the MLK Day. Uh on January twentieth uh at nine AM at the Chris County Auditorium. As we're properly moved in second that we consider and approve this event permit, any discussion? Seeing now, we shall proceed. Yes, sir.
I I would like to encourage everyone, everyone here at City Hall who's available to attend this event. Uh please attend, and and that's all here for now.
Alright, alright, Commissioner Reeves, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepard?
Yes.
Commissioner um Rainey?
Yes.
And um thank you, you're gonna stay, but you don't have to, it's not, ain't gonna change your money. Alright, it is approved.
Commissioner uh Randy leading the most, I'm pretty sure, in this family will be, I tell you.
That's gonna be a busy day. Alright, uh consider and approve an event uh permit for the faith event on January twenty-fifth. It's been properly moved in second that we consider and approve this event. Alright, any discussion? Seeing now, we shall proceed to vote. Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepard?
Yes.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Rainey?
Yes.
It is approved. Thank you. Alright, uh agenda item number eight, consider and approve a resolution of the city uh for the city. Of the city uh for the city commission supporting Southern Firework. It's been properly moved in second that we're uh considering approving this resolution. Can we have background for the public? I read the email, but in the letter of support.
Uh yes, Southern Fireworks is applying for a grant. For Georgia broadband program and uh they requesting a resolution that has support. You have a letter of support in your packet and basically uh they are again applying for a grant. Uh this community definitely need uh access to high speed internet. Not only for educational purposes, but health and business opportunities as well, including. Uh promoting economic growth and so uh the current infrastructure that they have in place. And the customers that they provide service to, I've heard nothing but, you know, great comments about it and so. And I'm hoping that they are awarded uh grant funds so that we can expand the in- internet infrastructure here in the community.
Thank you for that, any discussion? Seeing now, we shall proceed to vote. Commissioner Reeves? Commissioner Owens? Commissioner Shepherd? Commissioner Rainey? Alright, motion carried, is the resolution is approved.
Alright, uh before I um go for that, one thing that we forgot. When we was appointing um uh the municipal court is. That be a clear understanding, Mr. Right, that um that yourself. And the city solicitor and the uh. The uh public defender um are uh. Reports to us, um the commissioners and elected officials or what have you. There's no um not the city manager and the three of you. When it comes to things separated now, it is clear by the city attorney and where state law is. That we are not to involve ourselves in any cases, but because of the financial responsibility and um. The procedural things because this department under the in the city, this commission body has authority over the court. Uh that needs to be crystal clear because I don't think it has been clear uh in the past. But that is crystal clear or what have you, and I wanna say specifically, we're not talking about intervening in cases. Or intervening in your decisions of cases. But if we feel it deemed as things as for us to function of the court being improper uh to some degree. Then um then you are. As a um according to the charter, we can have conversations about what's going on in the court. It's for us to functions of it, not cases or what have you. Uh there's a process if you feel like one of us as an elected official intervening. Um trying to use our authority to sway a case one way or another, or what have you, I'm pretty sure you know that, then our attorney. Uh but as far as, so that be no confusion. Then uh yourself, the city solicitor and the public defender do report to this body. Is that clear? Yes, you can hear it.
First off, Mr. Chairman, there's no doubt in my mind we're responsible to the commission. The commission does the hiring and firing, there's absolutely no question about that. Uh I would ask and I don't even answer right now, whether I'm responsible to each of the commissioners individually. Or the commissioners will get together and have someone approach me on behalf of the commission.
So let let me answer that really quick, I don't mean to cut you off, but. It is my opinion in my mind, it seems like conversations have been had around that conversation. Because you just sat through some stuff and talked about that, um. We don't have to appoint anyone of us to come talk to you directly because the people elected us in a democratic way. And because of authority now to take action, then yes, we have to make a decision as a body together. But to have a conversation, then part of being the city judge is there's five people up here. And you just gonna have to entertain and deal with or put up with uh uh. All five of us being able to come to you and ask concerns about that, so I'm not sure what you're getting at.
I'm not getting to anything, Mr. Chairman, I I just wanna be, know what ballpark I'm playing in. I can respond to all five of the commissioners individually, or I can respond to a representative of the commission.
It it isn't gonna be a representative, I'm telling you upfront and personally, I'm not going to. Delegate or give away my authority as an elected official to feel like I gotta go to a commissioner who's equal to let like me to go to you. It ain't gonna work like that.
I know, I'm not asking it to work like that, I'm just asking you how I should respond to the commission individually or as a body, so.
Um I get that, but it seems like the premise of your question is to say that only one of us would be able to approach you. Am I mistaken in that?
Only one of them will be able to?
To approach you, yes.
What I'm what I'm hearing from you is that any of them can approach you.
Yeah, but I think what I'm asking you, the way you frame your question, it seems to be you're saying that we'll have a representative to talk to you from.
No, sir, I was just simply trying to clarify how I was to deal with the commission. I have no.
You're to deal with the commission by reporting to it, if there are some outstanding issues or some issues you'd like for this body to address. Then you come to the commission and you re- you you see, just like the city manager does, city manager, you send e- every one of us an email together. That you were almost in the same position she is, same thing with the city attorney, you send all those emails together. But if one of us have an issue, just like if I have an issue, I had authority to go to the city manager myself. I have an issue to go to the city, I don't have to meet with this group and say, can I go to the city attorney or could? I I don't have to go to Commissioner Shepherd and say, would you go talk to the city manager for me, so. I wasn't understanding your question, if you need a issue or a, yes, you send messages, you send emails to all of us. But if we have an issue simply coming up with the court as far as its functionality, then one of us. Is in power to have authority to become you and address that issue, same thing with the city solicitor, same thing with the public defender. Because each one of those is first our charter has said that we appoint them as a body. Now, if we're trying to take action, we have to make that decision as a body. So the ballpark you're planning in to answer your question, in my opinion is, the ballpark is, if you have an issue that you want us to address. You send that to each and every one of us, just like again, the city manager and the city attorney does, am I mistaken in that? I I and 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 if we have an issue, uh we either may have an issue collectively or individually. But however it is, then we have authority to go to you, just as I went to you, the since I've been in the chairman position. And what you told me was, I need to go to the city manager. The reason I made that statement is because of the statement you made when I went to you and you said that. And only you know according to our charter, that's not the way it is, I don't have to go to the city manager, I don't have to go to another commission. I don't have to go to neither one of these people here beside me to say, well, this is what I'm gonna go talk to the judge about.
That's fine for me, Mr. Chairman, that's been awhile, that all all I was asking today is, how do you want me to deal with this? If I get a call from a commissioner at three o'clock in the afternoon, am I to deal with that individually or from. Commissioner individually, or am I to wait until that issue is addressed by the commission and the commission gets back there? I can do it either way.
My my thing is, Judge. Because you asked, uh pardon me one side, trust your judgment to figure out whi- which one you should do. But because you asked the question, I'll be blunt, I don't know if I can trust your judgment, I think it depends on what the issue is. I think if it's if it's asking for action to be taken in the court, then yes. If you feel like any one of us have done something improper, then as I said, there's a method for that. Uh or we have that you file a complaint, you do whatever you need to do to address that issue. But at the end of the day, um uh that can be a thousand situation, you can talk about a commissioner may call you on behalf. If it's reasonable, and one of these elected official call you and is is asking a question about something or or concerned about something. You handle that with that elected official, you don't have to inform, eh, let me be personally, cuz I don't like operating hypotheticals. When I can't hear about the issue about somebody having been treated unfairly in the court. That's an issue we can talk about, I just wanted to understand, and I didn't start with you, I started with Ms. Walker, and she told me as much as she could. But I simply wanted to understand, if I'm trying to understand some things, you don't have to feel obligated to get this whole commission involved. Now, if I want you to do something, then yes, that's when this whole body needs to be involved or what have you. To me, that's the difference, if I'm calling you to get an understanding, get clarification, they're saying what's going on, then. The two of us can handle that, based on I can get a clear understanding.
I think we're on the same page, Mr. Chairman, I I think we're trying to have an argument about something we agree on.
No, I don't think we're trying to have an argument, um I don't I don't think we're trying to have an argument because of the issues before. And I take the the laughter offensive because it's not a funny moment to for me. I don't think we're trying to have an argument, I think we're trying to string this up and be clear on it. Because you got up and you asked what you were addressing, you had a question, so it's not a laughing matter for me right now. Because I think we're trying to just be clear, and if my tone seemingly is because I'm trying to understand what you're trying to say and I be. Um not trying to go too far into what it is. So my tone is, I'm I'm just trying to figure out the the premise and purpose of your question. Because to me it was, my statement was much clearer than um eh eh but that's how people talk. People think what they're saying is clear, and apparently it wasn't, so I'm trying to be crystal clear as the extra layer. I'm not trying to argue with you, I'm trying to make it clear from this point forward, is that?
I I don't think we have a problem. I would like to make one other comment, um some allegations or some questions have been raised about complaints against the court. We have never been confronted with a single complaint against this court. Now, I've got ears, just like everybody else, and I hear rumors. But as far as somebody coming, a commissioner coming to me and saying, we have had this complaint, that your court is doing so and so. It just has not happened.
Sir, man, that's a lie, and I normally don't charge the word lie, but I'm gonna say that's a lie. Because I came to you specifically, and that's when we had a conversation. Uh between the issue with Mr. Land, I said, this is my problem, Judge, and we went back there in that room and we talked about it. So that's a flat out lie, you can take a seat. I I I'm telling you to take a seat before I'm in this gathering, just like you run your court, I run this meeting, now take a seat as I told you. Because I, what I'm not gonna do, I'm not gonna have you say a lie in front of this court. Because I think the camera was rolling the day I came in here and we had that issue, and so that is, and that part of that was addressing that complaint. So you you said no complaint, so I'm gonna ask you, just like you ask the people that come in your courtroom when you're running, to take a seat. You're out of order, take a seat, we can talk personally about this. No, you can have a seat, you can have a seat now, your time is expired, you wasn't on the job, have a seat, thank you.
Alright, agenda item number nine, considering approval of the first reading of an ordinance to me and Nicole. Of a city of court year providing the term of the municipal court judge.
Chairman, this is state law, it requires the cities uh have a municipal court.
Pretty standard.
Yes, sir, to uh for their two year term, uh municipal court judge by state law is no longer an ad will employee. Uh he can be removed with those, one of those five things and parry rectify by two thirds vote of the uh city council. And uh we would ask that you adopt this on the first reading.
It's been properly moved in second that we uh. Considering approve the first reading of this ordinance, um. End of discussion. Uh sir, my question is, why would we approve this on the first ordinance, our standard is, we have to have two readings. Is that exceptional or loophole in the law?
I I don't think we have dispensive second reading of the court year, you can adopt it once and adopt it again. Uh at uh in our next meeting.
Okay, okay, well, maybe I misheard you there, alright.
Did I say, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you said adopt it on the first reading, did you say that? Okay, I I uh you know, I've, okay. I I just wanna be clear, it's, you got a little late here for all I need, but I, okay, alright, any other discussion? Alright, seeing now we shall proceed to vote, Commissioner Rainey? Reeves, Shepherd? Owens? Alright, uh it is considered and approved, thank you. Alright, agenda item um number ten, considering through the second read. Uh of the ordinance fixing and publishing qualified fees for uh for the election for twenty twenty five.
Mr. Chairman, this was an ordinance requiring uh us publish the positions of our vote for election this year. Of course, qualified won't be until the end of the year in office, uh so uh we have an at large position. Qualified to be at five seventy six and Ward two and Ward three also at five seventy six, and we ask you to adopt this on the second read.
I'm not really for the rough office this time.
You can use campaign funds, they they have street people. You you can use your campaign funds.
I never get in the bank.
It will left up to me, I had the same.
Who was left up to?
I don't see in the last minute when you had, I was like, oh, it's the same.
Exhibit A, Mr. Chairman, this is one, there's a notice that replaces this court on this round.
And we will have a place that uh by February first, okay.
Alright, end of discussion, close the discussion on it, besides them all. Alright, seeing now, she'll proceed to vote, Commissioner Shepherd? Uh Commissioner uh Rainey? I called the first two commissioners who have done affect, uh hope I don't affect anybody, not even myself just yet. Commissioner Owens? Commissioner Reeves? Alright.
Was there a motion at the second?
I think so, was it? Most, oh no, cuz I think they, the city attorney, yeah, yeah, okay, that's right, thank you for. Keeping you on that, no, you're fine, alright, do we have a motion in a second for? Do we have a second? Alright, now, let's have a vote, alright, Commissioner Rainey? Commissioner Shepherd? Commissioner Owens? Commissioner Reeves? Alright, it passes with three votes, alright, alright. Agenda item number eleven, considering approved war discretionary fund usage guidelines. Do we have a motion in the second? It's been properly moved in second to discuss this one, alright, end of discussion.
Based on what we read, I think it's pretty solid. Stuff like that, or and and after the discussion we had, when we talked about budget. Um this gives us an opportunity to uh look at some things that we can do in our wars individually, I think it's a good thing. Because there are some moments where we see some needs or some things that we couldn't have been doing, and this gives us that chance to uh move forward with that. And I think the most, the most helpful part is is the fact that um it's very clear as to what they can't be used for. So to make sure that we don't find ourselves in ethics violations and doing that, so I'm very appreciative of that. I think it still has a uh a uh a welcome challenge to be able to find things that we can do that I can do to. To better serve our wars individually as well.
And I think that's my initial one, I may have to discuss them.
Any other discussion, comments? Um thank you, well thought out, as Commissioner said, uh Commissioner Owens said, I I think especially the practical. Exemplars is very helpful, you know, so thank y'all for that, yeah, that's the most helpful part about it, alright. We shall proceed to vote, Commissioner Owens? Commissioner Shepherd? Commissioner Rainey? Commissioner Reeves? Alright, motion carried, the guidelines are approved, alright, uh agenda item number twelve. Twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, L B A projects.
In your packet, um that was sent on Friday, you have a list of twenty twenty four supplemental. Uh projects as well as twenty twenty five, um yesterday I had opportunity to go then. And look at some of the uh streets and and the project on, well, excuse me, on the project list. And uh there were a couple of things that I asked uh Kobe to uh change and look into. And so you will see that uh the supplemental funding for twenty twenty four. And these are the additional funds that were approved and in these particular projects uh. Uh match is not required, and so the estimate. And so the estimated cost is four hundred and twelve thousand twenty four dollars and fifty nine cents. And of course, the cost increased because it was mentioned before, you will see that some of these projects list a full debt. Reclamation, meaning that these roads will be paid to the standard, uh something that. I would not say all of roads or some of the roads were not, and so you have an increase in costs due to that. And then of course, twenty twenty five, um you have those projects that were listed as well, and so. Um I think we have uh projects on the list that will definitely. Uh be of benefit to the community. And uh one of the particulars uh street, uh twelfth street, um. Yeah, twelfth street in the Gillespie area, not on this west, we do have the full scope of that project. From uh twelve and a half alley up to fifteenth avenue. And of course, the contractor or developer for Gillespie, they've already paid the other portion. Now we would come in uh with this project and uh do the striking in that area. And so, um Cody, you including the ant today? So at this time, I had, we had a discussion, but I would like to ask for approval. Uh for both the twenty twenty four and the twenty twenty five project.
Alright.
Twenty eighth Avenue, thirteenth Street, in that Cody circle.
I promised the people something, I won't lose my trust.
Alright, any other discussion?
Thank you, city managers, for going back over and what we was looking at and taking a closer look personally. And also the work you did and um you know. Kind of understanding of the uh we wanted to do the job the the right way. And do it the right way the first time, so we won't have to come back before we need to, so thank you for that. And would the city manager ask for us to approve uh the list, uh so do we have a motion? I've been properly moved moved in second that we are uh approving the L B A projects for this list. All of uh I should be wrote, uh Commissioner Owens? Uh Commissioner Shepherd? Commissioner Reeves, Commissioner Ray? And it was approved. Alright, we finally made it for the city members.
Good morning again, and happy new year, almost here, nine minutes away from afternoon, but we're good. Okay, city manager to report for uh January seventh, twenty twenty five. Uh just want to start out with some upcoming events on January ninth. Uh that is this coming Thursday from nine thirty to ten thirty AM. The faith based minister group will meet at the community clubhouse from nine thirty AM until ten thirty AM. Um all are invited to the seventy fifth annual dinner for the Chamber of Commerce. New officers and board members will be installed at that time, the reception is at six PM, dinner at seven PM. And that is on January thirtieth, um at Lake Black here. On February seventh, um the Chris County Community Council presents that annual daddy daughter dance. Which is always a great event from seven PM to nine PM at First United Methodist Ac- Activities Center. And then of course, if you still have a live tree up or if you've taken it down. You have until January thirty first to drop it off at uh bring one for the chip, and this is at Wiggins Field behind uh the theater. And so uh we uh keep Chris beautiful as always. Um helpful in making sure that the live trees are taken care of. Just wanna make you aware of some upcoming items and things that are going on in the city. Um flags that have staff, of course, in respect for President, uh former President Jimmy Carter. And the governor has ordered that all flags uh by half staff and the president, President Biden, until. Sunset on January twenty eighth, and so uh the flags will remain at half staff until that time. Hopefully, if you pass by at night, you have noticed increased lighting at City Hall, thanks to the power commission. Uh I met with uh one of the employees several times, and so we do have additional lighting. Uh for the fire department as well as the back parking area here at City Hall. There is a, there are a couple of other areas that we need to address, and I'll be reaching back out to them regarding those areas. But we we are thankful for Chris Power and for their assistance in providing additional lighting here at City Hall. As well as at the community clubhouse, when we had the event after the Christmas parade. It was uh dark at the community clubhouse, but now if you pass by the lights or the lights have been replaced and. Um so we have increased lighting there. Uh Chief Ali Good has already mentioned an I I S O rating, which we're extremely. Proud of that, and it's a benefit for this community. Debbie mentioned the bid opening here out yesterday for the lead service line replacement project. Uh the roundtable group, we will meet, review those uh proposals, so we can uh bring. A company back to you for approval hopefully at the January twenty first meeting. Uh the Georgia Chamber of Commerce, Agent Alicia's breakfast breakfast speaker will be held on January fourteenth at the Fox Theater from six thirty AM. Until nine thirty AM, and that is an opportunity to hear from um representatives here in Georgia. Uh as well as uh the governing others regarding upcoming upcoming initiatives for the general assembly this year. Uh the community clubhouse meeting will be held on January thirteenth, uh here in the courtroom at ten AM. The next land bank meeting is scheduled for January fourteenth at Chris Power um at one PM. As uh Irene mentioned in her report, the historic preservation commission meeting will be held on January fifteenth. Six PM here in the courtroom for the two items that have pending before them. Just as a reminder, we have been receiving calls regarding uh property taxes. Uh property taxes, uh some of you probably received your bill over the weekend yesterday, but they are online. So if you have not received your property tax bill, but you would like to go ahead and pay it. We can pull it up on the system, you do not have to have that bill with you, uh we can pull it up and you can pay it, but if not. They're on the way, deadline to pay is March sixth, so that is a change from last year, the deadline is March sixth. All business license or occupation taxes, they are called, uh were delinquent. Uh well, they expired at end of the year and they become delinquent, it's not paid by April first. And of course, we have a penalty that is imposed. And then after April first, businesses operating without an occupation license. Will receive a summons to appear in municipal courts non-pay. You have my list of meetings and events for uh December. And then I would just like to remind the public that we will be closed January twentieth for Martin Luther King holiday. And we'll reopen, we will we'll reopen on Tuesday, January twenty first at eight eight AM. Uh one item I would like to uh bring up for discussion with the commission or to get your feedback on. Um the CDB application is due in April, and I know that there's been some conversation regarding a project. Um and so uh if you all can share with me, you know, now or by phone or. You know, email uh projects that you would like to see us apply for. I know one that came up last year was uh related to drainage improvements, because. As you all know, we had flooding last year, so we do have pictures of of the flooding, T V, you know, reports. And so again, because we are in a uh entitlement community. And like, yeah, then we uh apply for applications through the state, which means. Those applications, they have to be very competitive to be awarded a grant. And so, you know, just think about projects and and let us know, we have a. Uh you know, timeframe that we're working on, but um if you can let us know, then we'll make sure. That, you know, we get with River Valley, uh because they do prepare the application for the city so we can select the project.
In regards to that, could you? Give us a list of the, and I think it'd be good for the public as well, list of the projects over the last. You know, maybe ten years that we have done, and maybe we need to go back further, cuz I know a few of them. Uh but if you could give us a list of the projects that have been done with that the the grant. Because I I know it's a, it's a a shrill near way to get the capital projects done without having to come out to city. Or where have you, and I think that's a lot that can be done and should be done, and I I do wanna use it to tailor. Phases, like a bigger plan that it goes into. And so that, so every year, uh when we did, you know, you wanna use it next for. And so, you know, it has been done, and then come up with, you know, plans to use. Uh it's time for, and I know things change, I know what happens, so, but having a tentative plan, you know. For how we wanna direct these funds in in even in the future would be good.
And then just as a reminder, uh if you have not uh sent an R S V P for A D S. Um uh Reverend Reverend cutting grand opening, uh please remember to do that by the fourteenth and then. Uh just a reminder of the joint um intergovernmental meeting on Thursday. The ninth. One thirty. And that's all I have on this year.
Any other questions for the city manager concerns? Thank you, ma'am, I do have a question about, will approve all the calendar already?
And the federal offices gonna be closed out there, city post offices over there, that's federal, not local, but federal.
And the banks are going to be open too, so. Yeah, the declaration from the president was for federal offices.
Thank you. City attorney, have anything for us?
No, sir, ah, thank you very much.
Alright, alright, and we already had a second session, I don't think anybody else wanna go back in there. So, at this time, I actually want to turn to a jerker. Alright, I got two moves. Okay, we got move move in a second, alright, at this time, um uh we got. Motion in the second to adjourn the meeting at twelve oh one, all in favor of you know my voice, well, ah.